Now be recorded.
Okay, the committee of the whole meeting of March ninth, two thousand and twenty one will now come to order. Present are council members Glassburn, Schuman, Heeman, Bressard, Kelly, Limpert, and Williamson, as well as the mayor, law director, finance director, wastewater treatment plant superintendent, city engineer, Chief Wagner, and guests. On tonight's agenda is to discuss amendments to ordinance two thousand and twenty one dash fifteen, the two thousand and twenty one budget. As this legislation, I'm sorry, Mr. Schuman.
I apologize for interrupting you. I was kind of hoping we could address the the amendments that were approved by the Finance Committee before we do anything else, if that would be amenable.
Mr. Schuman, I'm happy to come back to that, but I'll finish with the introduction first. Thank you. As this legislation has already been moved out of the Finance Committee, there will be no votes or recommendations coming out of this meeting tonight. This meeting is more of a work session than a typical committee meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to try to identify amendments a majority of council supports so that a clean copy may be put in front of everyone prior to the next reading of the bill. While no one is required to specifically say how they will vote, it is the sense, if it is the sense that a measure has at least the support of four members, I will ask the Director of Finance to include that amendment in the legislation. Prior to the next reading of this legislation, the package of amendments discussed will be offered on the floor. Keep in mind that this does not preclude any additional amendments from being made on the floor. This just helps us provide a piece of legislation for everyone to look at with items that appear to have majority support at this time. Finally, a point of clarification, so everyone is working off the same documents. While the administration has proposed several changes already to legislation, on a technical basis, no amendments have been accepted by council at this point. While the administration amendments will be discussed, the starting point of the legislation is the copy as it stood introduced on first reading. Okay, now, I circulated a document. Hopefully, the email troubles did not prevent everyone from getting that. I will come back to that. But, Mr. Schuman, if you'd like to make your point to start off, please go ahead.
I appreciate that. And again, I apologize for interrupting you. That's not, was not my intention. The, there were three amendments or parts of an amendment that were offered and recommended by the Finance Committee, and we never voted to amend on the floor. And I thought maybe it would be appropriate if we got those out of the way first. So they include Law Enforcement Trust, community policing, and the Small Business Technical Assistance Program. The the Law Enforcement Trust Fund Contractual Services, twenty five hundred dollars. Endowment and Grant Fund Supplies, Community Policing, fifteen thousand dollars. And then the Economic Development Fund, which is actually broken down into two parts, ten thousand dollars for technical assistance and fifteen thousand dollars for the new business mini grants. And I would like to see all three of these be included in the budget. As to the Small Business Technical Assistance Program, as we move forward, I think it's going to be very important that we encourage new businesses to come to North Olmsted. And I think this is a real good starting point. As a ward councilperson, I've had small businesses reach out to me before when they were having issues with the city regarding code issues. And this is a chance for us to give them some support in that. The fact that we would be working with Cleveland State University in regard to helping small businesses would also give them help with HR, our HR cyber security, accounting, training and coaching, all kinds of stuff that they wouldn't normally get. And then our end of this would be help with the kind of things that we do, which is the building and zoning. A lot of times, they don't know if, what they have to do. And to be able to coach them, small businesses don't have the resources that big businesses do, and I think this would be a real, real helpful to them. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to bifurcate that into two groups, just to start off with, because I believe we have different proposals regarding small businesses that we can discuss. But starting off, in the item I circulated, Topic Eight was, under the amendments, was law enforcement, the community policing, and outside services. That seventeen thousand five hundred is the same as Mr. Schuman just described. My understanding, and I asked the law, the Finance Director to correct me if I'm wrong, that these are coming from special revenue accounts. I, I, I will accept a thumbs up if it's, if that's the case.
All right, I'm, I'm working from my office tonight, and I got more screens, so I don't know which way to, which way to click. Anyway, what, the Law Enforcement Trust are, those are like forfeited monies, and those are, those are special revenue funds, and they have to be used for that specific purpose. And the endowment and grant, those, those were monies for us, for like dare and community policing that were collected and donated. And so those are restricted donations that have to be utilized for that purpose.
Okay. So it doesn't sound to me like this has any other, the money is going to go to this anyway. So I had the same idea as Councilman Schuman on this as well, to be supportive of this. Is there any council member that objects to this or wishes to make a comment on this, this set of items? Councilwoman Heeman?
Thank you, Mr. Glassburn. So to be clear, though, we're only discussing your line, Item Eight, which is the law enforcement items. Is that correct, the seventeen thousand five hundred? Because you separated them from, yeah, okay, then I'm supportive of that. I'm not of the other. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? Yes?
I just want clarification. One, they're both law enforcement related, but there's two separate funds. One, the Law Enforcement Trust, and the other, Community Policing. And together, they equal the seventeen five. And so you're talking about them collectively, and I, but you're approving them both. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Thank you, Director Copter. Okay. We'll come back to the economic development items. But I'd like to try to get as many consensus items out of the way first. So are there any items or any points that anyone would like to make prior to me delving into my large spreadsheet? Councilwoman Heeman?
Thank you, Mr. Glassburn. You know, I, I don't, maybe we could talk about that, Technical Assistance Program. I recognize that Mr. Schuman is very much in favor of it. I'm very much against it. I think that small businesses get a lot of services from the Small Business Administration. I think that even that TSU program, there are lots of free things, other things available to them. I believe that we also should just be providing better customer service within our building department. And I think that we've paid for training, across training, for those things to happen. So I really don't think that that's a program I would be in favor of. And so I didn't mean, Mr. Glassburn, to overstep your discussion, but I think that that might be an easier one to dismiss rather than continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So let me, let me talk about this sheet just briefly. For those that haven't seen it, I tried to outline, at least to the best of my understanding, and Director Copter and I talked about this extensively today, different items as, as how they're playing out in the overall budget. Sometimes when we talk about amendments or specific items, we forget what's going on around them and don't realize that we make unintended choices by what we're doing. So the General Fund, which is the thing most, I believe, you noticed, increased from the eight hundred fifty nine dollars to projected at nine hundred thousand twenty five, or twenty six thousand and change. We also had some small improvements in the Economic Development Fund, the law enforcement, and about by four hundred thousand from street maintenance. So those are all good and positive developments. But what I don't want us to lose sight of as we go through here is that we did not find nine hundred thousand dollars. We don't have nine hundred thousand dollars to spend on anything. We still have a number of items that are drawing down on funds. So at the, towards the bottom of the sheet, Topics thirty three through forty two, and I'm, or forty four, I'm not going to beat folks over the head with them. But we have in the vicinity of two point eight million dollars of special revenue accounts that are being drawn down. These are funds that pay for roads. These are funds that do separation pay. These are funds that are our trash collection and our workers' comp. So while it may not feel like we're making a cut or seem like we're making a cut, we are taking the opportunity cost at some point of using that money to, to pave a road or to take our trash collection, et cetera. So to my way of looking at this, I would just as soon try to resolve some of those deficits with the vast majority of this money than to try to spend it on too much in the way of new initiatives. I think we should focus our attention on very specific and finite items. So that, that is really what I was trying to advocate for. The amendments that are in the new budget, but were not offset, are about three hundred thousand. So there's some additional spending in here, but most of it are items that I believe most of us will feel should be there. So the amendments that I would be proposing come in two buckets, if you will. The first being the one through eight you see at the top, which are specific items, and we can go through those, and most of them were in the temporary budget, and we have debated before. The second is the concept of allocating our money towards some of those accounts so that we do not lose track of how much we're actually spending. So on balance, for the whole budget, we're spending, let's see, was six million? Director Copter, what are we at now on the all funds budget? Or maybe I can bring it up here. So we're spending seventy five point four million. We're taking in sixty nine point six. So we're at about six million, five point eight. So that, the, the, where I'm getting at is that amendment that lists in the most recent version, five hundred thousand, is to put money back into the, from the General Fund into entities that we are taking from. So for example, historically, most of our road maintenance workers' salaries and benefits have been paid out of the General Fund. In this budget, we move them all to the Road Maintenance Fund. The risk of doing that long term is that not only do we do less roads because there's less money there for the actual road itself beyond the labor, but we lose track of the fact that that used to be a general fund expense. And then as funds get depleted, then it's the roads that are the ones that are cut because there, that's the fund that has the problem. So what I am suggesting, and Director Copter and I talked about this extensively, is to put fifty percent of the road salaries and benefits back to the General Fund, leave fifty percent in the streets and maintenance. That will be about four hundred ninety five thousand. Director Copter sent me the exact number this evening. Four, four hundred ninety four thousand, five hundred eighty and sixty nine cents. So that we understand that that nine hundred thousand, it'll be reduced by that amount, but we understand that the funds we have are going to still need to go to these various responsibilities we have for a city. Secondarily, and I don't have listed on the sheet, we discussed a, doing a similar thing with the separation pay in terms of transferring two hundred fifty thousand in that direction, but the two, the two sets of items are, that I'm talking, that I would like to talk about are the allocation, what I'm calling transfer amendments, where we're not spending new money on new things. It's what accounts do we want the money to be in? And then the actual amendments that decrease or increase. So that was a very long way of me getting to, I think it'd be worthwhile for us to talk about the spending amendments first, because they increase and decrease how much money we have to work. And so unless there's, someone wants to talk about a specific topic first, I'll just go straight down the list that I have. Okay. Seeing no takers. First item on the list is the much debated salt truck. This is an item that was put in to the budget, in the temporary budget. The administration removed it from the permanent budget and put back a street sweeper, which was removed in the temporary budget. What I am suggesting is that we have the salt truck and the street sweeper. They are both in the budget. So, Mr. Limpert, go ahead.
Yeah, if there's any item on here that I feel strongly about, it's, it's this salt truck of, I don't, I don't understand why we're trying to force a capital expense of a salt truck. I, I understand that at one point it was on. We've gone through the winter now. You know, based on equipment like this, you only use it based on the way the weather is. We have six other salt trucks. I haven't received a phone call in two years from a resident about having issues with the plowing system or their driveway. And if it's anything, it's, it's about sidewalks. So like, I, I guess, you know, that's just one councilperson's perspective, and maybe your guy's phone's ringing off the hook about, you know, the roads being not maintained well, but I, I just don't understand why this is such a priority for two hundred thousand dollar spend if we're looking at trying to make strategic choices. To me, it seems like something that could be addressed in the future. So this is the one that I, I just don't understand why we're so adamant to get it back in the budget. And, and I understand that at one point it was recommended, but we've gotten through another winter. I'm sure it had less wear than expected based on the, the amount of shoveling that I, I saw around our neighborhoods. So this is, this is the one I'm just kind of, if there were something we were going to cut, it would be this salt truck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Limpert. Does anyone else wish to discuss this item? Councilwoman Heeman? Go ahead, Councilwoman Heeman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Glassburn. I think that it was put back in, Mr. Libbert, if I could, you know, not directly address you, but sort of the, the question that you had. Because it, it seemed to be sacrificed, if you will, for, you know, the street sweeper. And since we already had a purchase order for it, and it was actually purchased in process, if you will, I think that, if I'm wrong, Mayor, please correct me, but I think the administration felt strongly about both pieces of equipment, which have now, I think, been put back in. So I don't have a preference one way or the other, except for that if our street crews need that, then we would want to give that to them. So, so we were sort of looking at it before as though, well, it was already in process. We already had the purchase order. We already made the buy almost, right? And we were lucky that they let us out of it. So I will defer to anyone that wants to, you know, say the, what the need truly is for that, because obviously, you know, I'm not the complete decider of that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Heeman invoked. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to stress that, yeah, salt truck is, is on our radar, certainly. And whether you put it in the budget or, or don't put it in the budget, it's something that I would love to buy this year if the budget looks good. Whether you put it in and the budget starts to look bad, it happens every year where we don't buy stuff that's in the budget. And it happens every year where we do buy stuff that we never put in the budget. So from an administrative standpoint, I am interested in the salt truck, realize there's a six or nine month delivery timeframe on that. So I, I would, I would love to have it by the new year if we could do it. But again, what we talked about in budget and what I sent you in budget was our top priorities. But this is, again, a priority, and if the budget looks good, I would be interested in buying the salt truck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I should mention and apologize for not mentioning in my introduction that Director Copter and I each have been trying to ascertain what, what might be coming our way as a result of the President Biden's and the US Congress's American Recovery Plan. Trying to predict Washington is always difficult. What we have been told or read so far is that there will be two separate tranches of money that we will receive, one this year and one the following year. Based on how the CARES Act was distributed, it would appear that that money coming to North Olmsted might be on the order of three million dollars each year. However, one, the money potentially could be absorbed by the state or other entities by them cutting aid or other programs to us, as we've seen in the past. And secondly, we don't fully know the restrictions as to how the money can be spent. It appears that the money will be eligible to be spent on revenue replacement, which would give us substantial flexibility. But again, it's premature probably to count on that at this time. Director Copter, is there anything on that topic you'd like to add that I didn't mention?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that the American, whatever they call it this time, I can't even, Responsibility, or whatever it is, Recovery Act, right?
Recovery Plan, yes.
Oh, yes, yes. They're printing money. Anyway, you know, yeah, we, we think that that's, that's what we're going to get, but we don't know what, what it can be used for. And I mean, we don't know if our revenues are still going to be reduced this year. So I would, I would hate to count on that to pay for a salt truck. However, do remember that if you are moving fifty percent of the wages and benefits out of the Street Maintenance and Repair Fund for, like, just say, round numbers, five hundred thousand, and then you're putting back two hundred in expense there, it's a net of three hundred that you're adding back to that fund balance. So I think, I think that the fund can handle that. And maybe you put it in there and, or you don't, and we talk about it in July, or you put it in there, and, you know, recall that we still have to come to council to purchase that salt truck. So we can look at that time and say, yeah, we do have the money, or hey, these gas taxes have dried up, or what have you. So I mean, a budget's a point in time. You can do it either way.
Thank you, Director. Okay, any other comments on the salt truck? Okay, I heard one objection. Are there any other objections? Okay. So I'm going to interpret that as that's what we would like, and that we're not going to mess with the street sweeper. So we will keep moving down the list. And Director Copter, I'll, in my notes, send you everything I'm saying if I'm not clear, and please feel free to ask me if I'm not clear.
And if the emails up.
Agreed. Okay. So that takes us to our big topic of the night, the Economic Development Grants. We've heard a little bit from Councilman Schuman on the topic. I will start with my point of view. I think we have some idea of what the proposal is. I think we know what our Small Business Relief Grants are. At this time, it's my view that we should be focused still on the recovery portion of our programming. The relief grants, if we could have done more than fifty thousand in the temporary budget, we would have. I think we can prudently do the additional twenty five now. If we use all the funds, then we can reevaluate whether we need to increase. If we don't use the funds, we can reevaluate and see how we might better deploy those for the benefit of the community. But for right now, if there's an opportunity to try to keep businesses in place for the next two to three months while businesses wait for Washington's Recovery Plan for them, I think we all saw how the PPP and other programs took months and months and months. That, that's my strong preference, is, is to direct all of the funds to relief now. And as we come out of the pandemic and get through April thirtieth of the program, then reevaluate at that point. But I will yield to others. Councilwoman Heeman?
Thank you, Mr. Glassburn. I am greatly in favor of increasing that fund. I told you that just several small businesses that I actually shop at had no idea that we even had such a fund. And, you know, they, they didn't know that it was available. And they're in the process now, at least three of them, of getting their packages together to make application. I understand we have several applications right now. And so I think that that went quickly for, you know, those that knew, but I don't think that there was a big enough effort to make it known. And I personally, you know, called and or visited those small businesses that I frequent. One of them is actually a second generation business in our city whose product competes in part with, you know, a very large retailer as one of the products in the very large retailer. And, and this is a store dedicated to that product. So I would definitely like to keep those family businesses and keep them going, and I think that there will be relief coming for them. But in the interim, I think we are at, pretty much to, to try to help them not only by shopping, but then by also giving funds if we, if we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Are there any others that would like to address this topic? Mr. Schuman?
So smart money is always thinking six months out. That's why the stock market is as high as it is right now, because people are betting on six months down the road that things are going to be really good. The, this same body, we talk all the time about the vacancies we have. Those vacancies are not just in those storefronts, which are a black eye, but the, all those office, all those office spaces which are vacant. I think we have an opportunity. It's a huge opportunity. I have to be very confident of the future. But I think we need to position ourselves right. And I think this program would do that. It would separate us from other communities. And this is, again, it's an opportunity to position ourselves as an incubator for small businesses. an incubator for small businesses. Small businesses can become big businesses. And that's something that we have to, we have to consider. And we have to consider the future. We can do it right now. And I'm all for giving these grants out to the businesses that are trying to survive. I'm all for that. I voted for it. I think this is a totally different thing here that we're talking about. We've got to think down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schuman. Councilwoman Heeman?
Thank you, Mr. Glassburn. I don't disagree, Mr. Schuman, that at some point in time, we need to make a way better effort than we ever had at attracting businesses to our city. I understand that we have had one or two sort of boutique type, incubator type businesses, if you'd like to call them that. There have been, you know, Magnet is a big manufacturing, you know, incubator kind of business forum. There, there's all kinds of things. Cleveland Whiskey was started like that, a million of them. None of them have ever come through our business development people to us. And I don't know why that is. So I think unfortunately, you know, that, that, that is not something, it's not a ship I can jump on right now, because I think it's a little too far down the road for the two things. The number of vacant spaces we have is far too great to think that, you know, two or three new little small businesses will save us. And I think that we've got to keep what we have. One of the big discussions we had during our, you know, did we want a face mask program, right? You know, that was a tough discussion. And fact of the matter is, is we're still wearing them. And many families that received face masks from us have long since worn out and they needed more, as a matter of fact. So it's always a tough decision, but I think that helping what we have is, is important. One of our businesses, you know, closed down in favor of keeping a location in two other suburbs. And, and that person closed, our own resident, closed their business right here in North Olmsted and kept two other locations open. Had we had this program in place, that could have possibly convinced them to stay or to try to hang with us a little longer. So I really think we need to keep what we have. And, and then look toward the future and, and do our best to, to help businesses come to North Olmsted. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Heeman. Are there any others that wished away on, Mr. Schuman?
Again, I'm not arguing about the program that we already have in place. No problem with it. I'm glad we're doing it. I'm talking about the future here. I want to know, are we going to put any money toward economic development? We've taken it all out of the budget as of the temporary budget. What's our plan for the future here?
Thank you, Mr. Schuman. Councilwoman Heeman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Schuman, I'm very much in favor of economic development. And I think in our future, we will have that. I don't think that we were served very well by the, by the type that we did have. I, in fact, attended a meeting with the administration and our economic development folks. And that business ended up in Westlake. And the reason it ended up there a few years ago was because he thought that they were too high end for us here and couldn't afford to be here because they were a nonprofit. They currently occupy a very large portion of an office space in Westlake that isn't a C rental space, if you will. And so I think that, that the program we were subscribing to was not very successful. And I think that a revamp of that would be in our future. And I'm very much in favor of that. Certainly, we don't do it as individuals on our own. I, I think, though, that for the, right here, right now, that this is a better opportunity. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Schuman, I'm going to remind everyone, the point of tonight's effort is to try to ascertain what amendments, if any, and we've already had a few, have a majority of support. I want to encourage dialogue, but a lot of these we've had debates on before. So I don't want us to lose track. The goal is to determine what the will of the majority of us is. So.
I would disagree with you, Mr. Chairman. I would disagree with you about having debate on this before. We cut the economic development person out of our budget without any discussion in December. And I don't know when we would have a discussion about it. Are we going to have any money for economic development? If we don't like the person that we were, the company that we were hiring to do economic development, then we should still fund it and find somebody else.
Thank you, Mr. Schuman. Again, my goal is not to see how much we can ping pong here tonight, everyone. I want us to be able to move forward. So if there are any more comments, the folks want to say, please, please do so. Mr. Limpert, I see that your microphone is on. Were you wanting to speak? Okay. All right. Any other members wishing to speak on this item? Okay. Is there? I'll keep asking it the way I've been in. Are there any members who object to this being included? As I've described. I know, Councilman Schuman, you would. Okay, then we'll proceed with it as I have described. All right, next, we have cemeteries, $2,500 for grounds and maintenance. So this was an amendment in the temporary budget. We have a pair of historic cemeteries in the city of North Olmsted. Councilwoman Williamson was originally the one who brought this to our attention. And I think the Buckeye Lanes situation that evolved over the last couple of weeks showed that there is a concern in the community about the state of our historic cemeteries and wanting to put a little bit of resources behind helping to maintain them beyond just the grass cutting. So that is the intention of this amendment. Are there any members who'd like to speak on this issue? Okay, seeing none. Are there any members who object to this moving forward? Councilwoman Heeman?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I think the mayor had a comment. I would, I would like to hear it if possible.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just wondering, I mean, what the $2,500 is for? I mean, normally, when you budget something, you have an idea. I would think if you want to, maybe look at improving the cemeteries, maybe like a really long approach might be good, you know, meet with the Landmarks Commission. Maybe it's not 2,500, maybe it's 25,000 that you might need to get things done right. And what is getting things done right? What I, I think might be different than what the Landmarks Commission may think. And I would say, we kind of open it up to the experts and figure out what we want to do, and then fund it to its full extent. I don't know that $2,500 is going to do anything. And I don't, I don't know what, why, why it was $2,500. But I think a longer approach to this would be, would be better. And that's just my two cents.
Councilwoman Heeman?
Thank you, Mr. Glassburn. You know, Mary, I agree with that $2,500 is not a lot of money. I mean, it doesn't work toward the headstone restoration, some of the things that we know take expertise. One of the things, though, that we were sort of quite short sighted with was when we did have, sadly, we lost Mr. Porter, our volunteer, who took care of a lot of things at our historic cemeteries. And in fact, ended up getting donated a new roof for our mausoleum at Butternut because it just was shot and nobody was doing anything about it. We don't have Mr. Porter any longer. We don't have any funds for even something like that, right? And, and so I would think that this is a start, not a finish. But I don't have an objection one way or the other to taking it away or increasing it. I mean, I just think that when I look back at that, that he worked so hard to donate that, that roof to us for the mausoleum. And we were all in shock that we even needed one. So I think we need to, to maybe even just have some inspections or do some preliminary things. And if the fund builds, or if we end up with more CARES Act money that could be used for something like this, or maybe we take the 2,500 then and move it to something else later as our budget, you know, rolls forward throughout the process of the year. But I know that I am the person who has one historic cemetery, and there is no funding for it at all. And it's damaged pretty often. So I would like to see it kept if we could. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Heeman. Are there any others that wish to weigh on, weigh on this subject? Councilwoman Williamson? We do not hear you yet. Okay, so I will come back to Councilwoman Williamson on this topic when we think we have a better connection. Is there anyone else who would like to weigh in on this topic on council? Okay, so for the moment, we'll set that aside until Councilwoman Williamson can rejoin. Next, on the list that I have is the redistricting. In the temporary budget, this is something we removed. It came back in the permanent budget from the administrative proposal for $7,500. It is my intention to offer to the city the data and resources for us to do this as a group on our own. This is one of those things where it's, it's a, it's a very easy thing for me to share with the city. And I'd hate to see us waste money on it unnecessarily. So are there any members who wish to discuss this topic? Mr. Limpert, and then Mr. Bissard?
Mr. Glassburn, could you just clarify what the services rendered are as it relates to this line item?
Sure. So there's, there's kind of three different buckets of products that cities or governments look for in this space. One is to be provided the actual census data in a format that you can manipulate. Second is, in effect, a license for software to, to do this. 10 years ago, in some cities, just instructed professionals to, to draw with them. What will be available in this cycle is online, sort of how we do screen shares now in these meetings. We will be able to use, utilize one license and make decisions and draw and do it as collectively. It won't require, I will be able to allow the city to make use of my, my resources with the official census information for, for anybody to propose a map, make a map on their own for the council to manipulate. It won't require my opinion or my, beyond that as my role as a council member. So the, the third bucket of services is to ask a professional to draw maps for you that are compliant with state and federal regulations. For federal regulations, we don't have, our, our only issue is population variance and making sure we stay within those norms. We don't have minority voting concerns or preclearance or other such issues. So really, we don't, that, that, what you would be getting in that third bucket of, of service is really a professional's opinion, not a mandatory service. So I hope that answers your question.
So to be clear, the service you're providing is a, basically hosting the data that you, you have for us to run simulations then? And not you run simulations, but for the body as a whole to, to run proposed maps?
I believe that's one way you could describe it, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Limpert. Mr. Bissard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I want to be clear. I appreciate the offer. And although your, your intentions are very probably well intentioned, the optics at best are not good from an outside looking in. And, you know, it's just my opinion that this is the very definition of conflict of interest. And we should all be trying to avoid conflicts of interest. There's been several instances lately and throughout everybody's council careers where you've had to abstain or withdraw from a discussion because of a conflict of interest. And, you know, this $7,500 is something that we budget for every 10 years. This is not a surprise budget item. And if you amortize it, that's $750 per year for 10 years. And I would just hate for somebody to be subjected to insinuations that, you know, where the Democrats are, you know, where the Republicans are. Let's just stay away from potential conflict of interest and just stay with a expected budget item like we have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bissard. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question was going to be for the law director. Is this a conflict of interest in your opinion?
I'm not necessarily, no, I'm not sure that it's necessarily a conflict of interest. Mr. Bissard mentioned an appearance of a conflict of interest. I mean, that's kind of a subjective opinion, isn't it? We all come to city council with our own skill sets. We are, some of us with different backgrounds have different, you know, values that we can bring to the table for discussion. Certainly, if somebody wishes to make a donation to the city, it needs to follow the donation process. We'd have to go through the, an ordinance and an acceptance. So it's a little bit different. In the same sense, you'd have to presumably have an ordinance to hire someone to do this anyways. So, no, I don't know that it's necessarily a conflict of interest. But, you know, if you want to have that discussion, it's certainly up to you folks. But I don't legally think that it necessarily equates with a conflict of interest.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Director.
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, if, if our law director doesn't think there's a conflict of interest, then I don't know why we wouldn't accept your ability to do this instead of spending the money. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would have to agree as well. If there's a way that we can save money and, and pay you back off of your expertise, and if you're willing to donate that, then I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Kopfer, and then it'll be Mr. Limpert? Can't hear you yet.
Forgot to click again.
There you go.
The, as I ponder this, regardless of whether you, we expend the money, or we accept a donation, we still have to have it in our budget. Because the way we accept donations is that, like, there's a contribution, like an in-kind contribution that we have to record the revenue and the expense. So both sides are grossed up by that donation like this. So, so I, I think that we still need that money, that line item in the budget to then recognize the donation. And so I don't know that it really matters whether it's a conflict or not, or what you decide to do when, when this all comes to fruition. I do think you still need that line item in there. So that's, that's all I'm, I think it's a non-issue.
I'll get you in just a second, Mr. Limpert. I, I'm not following. I mean, we don't put a, we don't hold $1,000 in reserve if somebody donates $1,000 to us, or if somebody donates something of value. We don't hold that in reserve in our budget. So why would we do that with this? Director?
Because you're donating your services for a specific purpose. And if there's a donation ordinance, you have to accept the donation. I mean, there's like a, and, and the accounting mechanism is an in-kind contribution. We do it a lot in grants and things like that, where there's, there's in-kind contributions that gross it up, the revenue and the expense. But I need the line item in the appropriation to be able to gross up that expense. The net effect on the general fund is zero, because there's also another $7,500 or whatever that amount is that. The net effect on the general fund is zero because there's also another $7,500 or whatever that amount is that. That we're going to get as that benefit. So it's, it's a wash.
This will be my last question on this and then I'll move on to Mr. Limbert. But for example, Councilwoman Heeman donated a bulletproof vest for Moch Arcanine. We didn't set aside in our budget an appropriation or an allocation of the cost of the vest, so.
Yes, yes, we did expend the purchase of the vest. So you did, and I think that you're talking something different with expenses. Like this is more of a services rather than a thing. But it still has the same effect. We had, we received a contribution. It's an in-kind contribution and we have the expenditure.
Mr. Limbert.
Yeah, if, if, if there's an item that we're required to do in the year. I don't know why we wouldn't have in our budget to do so until that donated service gets approved, right? So it, it's one thing if there's something that you're looking to make an expense for, but it's not a requirement. But aren't, aren't we required to do this every 10 years, so don't we have to do that this year? So to me, that needs to be budgeted until services are approved, that's all. So I mean, if we wanted to have, you know, votes before the budget of approving those services, then you would need to probably put in the budget. But if that's not the case and it's a required item, then it should be budgeted for as part of that. Fiscal year requirement, that's, that's just my take on it.
Councilwoman Heeman.
Thank you, Mr. Glasser. So to clarify, I donated a dog vest because there wasn't one in the budget, okay? It wasn't like I said, oh, wait, I, I think I want to do this instead. There just wasn't one, our dog didn't have one. So, so anyway, that is why I made the donation. But I do understand Councilman Limbert's point that if this is a requirement because it's redistricting. And we have to have, you know, an, an amount budgeted for that. I would think then the, the legislation to accept the donation comes with the amendment. That would then, you know, cancel out the line item, if, if I understand that correctly, Mr. Limbert.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying, I mean, you have to budget for it until that services is approved if it's a required task to do within the budget of the year.
I'm not an accountant, but it seems logical. Thank you.
Mr. Limbert, under normal circumstances, I would. Agree that that's probably the best technical procedure, but we will not receive census data until September 30th of this year. So. The likelihood is that we can't, I can't, I can't donate something that doesn't exist, right? So. I don't want to see us end up expending the money on, because of some technicality on this. I believe, Mr. Kelly, you had your. Hand up, or did I see that?
No, I did, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I, I understand about the, the. Line item remaining in and then to be able to accept the donation and sort of X that out. So it, it all makes sense to me at this point. Thank you.
Okay. I don't know if this is a question for Director Grow or Director Coffer, because this is under $10,000, would this have to come back to council or not?
Yes, Mr., well, to what, to, for the, the, the contract, the donation, what, what part of that?
The contract.
Oh yeah, it's more than five, so if it's a, if it's an outside vendor, it's more than five, it's a, it's a contract.
All right.
Mr. Grow, Mr. Chair rather, sorry.
Yes, Director.
I don't, doesn't council manage this process anyway? Isn't that part of their function? So council, it's not the administration. Like finding the consultant or doing this or that, it's council that tracks that process if I'm not mistaken. So if you leave it in your budget. And. It's your responsibility to do whatever, if you don't spend it, then it's still there. I mean, it's, it's not going to make or break the budget if you leave it in there now until you figure out more what you're going to. Donate versus what you have to still have consultants for.
Councilwoman Heeman and then I'm going to try to keep moving on this subject. Moving on to another subject, yes.
Yeah, I was going to suggest we go to another subject, but in the meantime though, Law Director. Would you have to give us a, you know, a little bit better understanding of that it, it is not a conflict? It should be in the council budget, like how, you know, with regard to Director Coffer's statement, maybe the two of you could clarify that. As a follow-up to this, so that when we would look at amendments, you know, we would know the answer to that.
You want me to follow up with some information by the next meeting, or do you want me to answer that question right now?
Well, I think you did answer it right now. But I think that Director Coffer might, might, I mean, I didn't really, you know, if she wants us in the council budget, I mean, I don't, if there's more thoughts on. So we could move on.
Many of the.
It is in the council budget.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, please, Director Grow.
Many of the things we're debating now will ultimately be up to city council because they require additional contracts. And legislative authority, most of, if not probably all of it. So whether you leave it in the budget isn't, doesn't determine whether or not it ultimately gets done. If you don't put it in the budget, it can't be done, but if it's in the budget, you still control whether or not it ultimately gets done because most of it. Was going to require your approval, so if it's a salt truck or if it's a redistricting contract or if it's a, you know. Schuman, Mr. Schuman's talking about this, this, you know, using some sort of a special, you know, business attraction program, whatever. Ultimately, you guys have to come back to that, so yes, Mr. Limbert's point, point is, is well taken. You have to do this and I'm trying to, I'm just trying to look it up real quick to see if it's within 60 days of the certified results. Or it was a very tight timeframe for you guys to get something done after you received the certified results. I just can't remember it, I was trying to look it up right now. So it'll be done this year, if you get it in September, in all likelihood, it'll be done in 2021. Whether it's through Mr. Glassburn or whether it's through some other contract. Now, you're certainly not going to want to wait until, till you get the results to figure out what you're going to do because you got to find a vendor if you're not using Mr. Glassburn. So you want to give yourself some lead time, you know, you probably figured this out prior to, prior to getting the certified results because your charter requires you to do something quick. But, you know, so I, I mean, for me, you could leave it in and then decide later on what you want to do. There's no harm, no foul, if the money doesn't get spent, it's still there and it, it'll be available, you know, later on for other purposes.
Mr. Chair, I, I agree with Mr. Grow's assessment.
Okay, Mr. Schuman.
Real briefly, it, it may come down to us actually hiring somebody for a smaller amount and using your. Your expertise, your information. And having a third party, that may be something we do just to raise the comfort level for some of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Grow.
By the way, just remember, if it's a donation, everybody should figure on three readings in 30 days. For a piece of legislation, who knows? So just plan ahead and so that you have that ready to go by the time these results are in place. Doesn't have to be decided now, but it's going to have to be decided long before you get those results, just a heads up.
Thank you, Director Grow for the reminder. Okay. Councilwoman Williamson, you appear to be back, let's see if your audio works and we'll let you weigh in on the, the cemeteries before we go on to a new subject.
I think the ship sailed, but I appreciate it. I'm on my phone now, for some reason, the computer is not working for me tonight.
Okay, so, sure, so I guess I will, on that. Item, real quickly, I'll re-ask, does anyone object to, including the cemeteries amendment? Okay, I'm not, Mr. Limbert.
Yeah, I don't, I don't object at all and I think that this is a program that's good. I, I do appreciate the mayor's observation that, you know, we should start figuring out what we want to prioritize with that money and. And then start building a backlog for future, you know, future funding as well. So I do appreciate Ms. Williamson identifying this as an issue and I think we can move forward with something. But we could probably start prioritizing and getting more communication on what we want to do with that funding.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, now it's coming back to me. So this originally started off. As our desire to see some improvements made, maybe, you know. Whether it be pulling up some of the headstones that had sunk down. But I do, again, have to reiterate Mr. Limbert's thoughts of, or comments regarding the mayor's. Suggestions to maybe think bigger and I, while we can start off slow here. And low, I'd like to see us maybe continue if we have monies like later in the year or perhaps budget a little bit more for next year. But thank you for considering this and adding this in.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman, so. I'm not seeing any objection on the cemeteries. And well, I think there's enough issue around the redistricting that we'll leave that for now. Off of the list of amendments. Okay, number six, I hope this one is easy. The permanent budget did not have an allocation for fireworks. I had a crazy idea that we did not need insurance for something that was not happening, but maybe I'm wrong. Does anyone wish to speak on this topic? Director Coffer.
Yeah, this was just an oversight. This was in, it's in the HR budget, this additional amount. And. We don't have any problems taking it out of the budget.
Great. Okay, does anyone on council have an objection or otherwise comment? Okay, we will take it out. Thank you. Next, we have North Olmstead Magazine, which is listed as postage for 3,000. This was one of the temporary budget amendments that was not included in the permanent budget. My view on the subject for what it is worth. Is if we're not going to be sending out the PAFR, I'm not sure why we would prioritize North Olmstead Magazine over the PAFR. So, which is the financial information we send out, so. To me, it seemed in, in the area of choosing things not to send, not to spend money on, an easy call. I'm going to ask council members first if anyone wishes to weigh in. Mr. Limbert.
Yeah, I, I honestly, I don't, I don't know why we're not sending out the PAFR. I think, I think at times like this, I, I get it, we're trying to save money on distribution, but you know, that. To me is an extremely valuable document to get out in the community to. Understand where we're at and to help provide transparency to, to residents.
Okay, Councilwoman Heeman.
Yeah, well, Mr. Limbert, are you, you know, are you suggesting or wanting to mail the other instead of the magazine?
I forget what the line item cost was, but yeah, to me, the PAFR would be a priority to send out.
Yeah, I would agree, thank you.
Okay, thank you both, I don't remember the exact, but I know it's in the vicinity of 3,000. Councilwoman Williamson, go ahead and I will.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I know that we, we have discussed sending out the PAFR and I know that this had come up before. Why are we not doing an electronic version where people can go and look at it if we posted it to our city website? And we save money there. You know, we could still do digital copies. In my opinion, I mean, of both of these things, right?
Yeah. Director Coffer, please feel free to add to this discussion.
Thank you all for speaking so highly of the PAFR, I appreciate that. But we still do the PAFR and we did one last year and we posted it and we pushed it out. I, I don't, MailChimp or something like that to all our outlets and we publicized that it was there, it's on our website. So even though we didn't mail it, it is out there in the world. I, I do like mailing it, but it is an expensive piece to mail. For $3,000 and so we, we're still doing one, we still intend on doing it. But it's going to be electronic, and in the budget, it's intended to be electronic because we do it in-house. So the only cost is our time.
Thank you, Director. Anyone else, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If I remember correctly, on the North Olmstead Magazine. Like I think there's, there's a lot of advertising that pays for the production of it and all that. So I don't know that we could do, just put it online and really get the same, like I don't know that the businesses and whoever. Advertises in it would want to spend the money on advertising for something that just resides on our website and we send it out as. And push it out to as many people as possible. So I'm not sure that that will work for the North Olmstead Magazine, but maybe someone from the administration can add to that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, that's correct, I mean, a, a big chunk of the money. For printing the magazine comes from the advertisers and then what we've paid for in the past is just the, just the postage to get it out. So. You know, without, without doing our part, they probably wouldn't put together a North Olmstead Magazine.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williamson, I saw your hand up and then it'll be Councilwoman Heeman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just in, in light of. What, what we've all experienced this past year and businesses needing, you know, the advertisement. I still think it would be a great space for businesses to place an ad. Maybe not paying what they did before, but if we had an electronic copy that could be sent out to the residents versus. Paper copies that maybe half of them end up in the trash anyway. I just think digital would be cleaner, at least for now, until, you know, we figure out this budget situation. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else want to weigh in on this, Council, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Heeman.
Thank you, Mr. Glasser, so if somebody could let me know, you know, later, not, not now. But send us an email regarding what the cost was actually to print it, what the cost we, you know, what revenues we received from advertising. And what our deadline would be and, and what revenues we would expect to get this year. Because I also would like to know if we have ever say had to supplement the production of it rather than just the postage. So if you're saying that we've always had it paid for and everything else paid for, you know, by businesses. Then, then did, I don't know, did we not have enough to mail it also? I guess I'd like to see, you know, the, the financial breakdown of maybe the last three years of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So. I think I've heard four folks, at least who would like to remove the item. Councilman Limbert, do you want me to take a straw poll of those putting the PAFR back in?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, honestly, for pulling it to 3,000, I'm, I'm not opposed to leaving it in. I just, to your point, I think the PAFR is a more valuable document to go out than the newsletter. So I. It, it will get distributed, I think, to Ms. Coffer's point through the MailChimp, et cetera. I just think if we're going to keep that in, I would rather have the PAFR.
Okay. Any other? Anyone else want to weigh in on this? Okay, I guess I will ask. Do folks object to doing, putting the PAFR back in? As much as I like it, I would not be inclined to do that. Okay, I. All right, are we raising hands saying we would not put it back in?
No.
Okay, Councilwoman Williamson, and then Heeman, and then Schuman.
Not in favor of it. I'd like to keep it out.
Okay.
I'd like to see the statistics, I'd like to see the statistics on the magazine first before weighing in one.
Okay, Mr. Schuman?
I think both of these should probably not be done this year. Thank you. We can do them, do the one digitally. I'm sure we could get it out. We could all work on that.
Okay, Councilman Kelly, I don't want you to feel left out. Go ahead.
I agree, do it digitally.
Okay. Mr. Bressard, anything? Nope. Okay, all right. So I hear a consensus of both out. We tackled the law enforcement items right off the top. Before I get back to my complex transfer amendments, are there any other up or down spending amendments that folks want to bring to our attention that we've not yet heard? Councilwoman Heeman?
Thank you. I did, I did have some questions for Director Coffer, if she doesn't mind answering a few more about Munis and iWorks. So I did receive all the information, and, you know, I appreciate that. And Mayor, I did get your information as well. So my questions revolve around just a few things. What I'd like to know is, so there are four areas that it seems to me, but it, but I'm, I'm asking for clarification, if there is duplicative work being done by Munis and iWorks. And that would be in the areas of the HR Building Service Department and Fleet. The reason that I'm asking that is because, you know, those departments do use iWork right now. And from what I can glean in the information that was provided to me, they use them for the same services as Director Coffer indicated that they're being used for by Munis. So I do understand, Director, that Munis is a financial package, and iWork does not offer a financial package. You know, but we don't use Workday or something else like that. We use Munis. So it looks like, you know, there's duplicative, but I'm, I'm not sure. I'd like to, to know if I'm reading this correctly.
Director Coffer, would you like to respond?
Or Director Gallo? You know, anybody?
Sorry.
I'll defer to Director Gallo on the HR.
Okay, thank you.
The Human Resources Department uses employee self-service. There's an applicant tracking module, but we do not currently use that.
So you do or don't use Munis, I guess, you know, you're, you're using it, you are not using it for applicant tracking?
We are not using applicant tracking. We are using employee self-service. And we use Munis for purchase orders on the financial, for financial reasons.
Okay, is there a reason that finance couldn't issue your purchase orders for you, and then you wouldn't need that component at all?
I don't believe so. I don't believe iWork offers the financial component for purchase orders.
Know that finance issues your purchase orders, meaning you send a memo or you do something that would say, you know, we're looking to buy this, that, the other. I don't believe our clerk of council issues our purchase orders directly, that we have to go to finance to get them. So I don't, and I guess if that's the only reason that you're using a Munis component is that finance could actually perhaps issue those for you at, you know, as being directed or requested. And that could save, you know, probably, I don't know, $14,000.
Director Coffer, do you want to respond? And then Director Gallo?
Every division enters the information electronically for purchase orders. They manage their own because it's a decentralized system, and then it electronically goes through the approval process to the division head, the director, finance, and then it gets issued. And it gets, that's, that is the mechanism. HR doesn't have its own purchase order system. And iWorks doesn't have its own purchase or services, and they all use Munis as that mechanism.
Andrew, okay, Director, what I'm asking, though, is do you not have enough employees within your department that that data could be entered for them? That they would send a memo to whoever it is in your department, and they issue a purchase order, you sign its authorization. I'm assuming then it goes to the administration as the final sign-off or to someone else, right? The, back to the director for sign-off. It seems to me that we're paying $9,722 for the cloud-based SAAS portion for the HR module, and then we're all paying 3,725.33 for the city-hosted portion of the Munis module, specifically, it seems, only to issue purchase orders for HR. And my question then will follow, Director, does each department, those other three, use it only in that same way? Because if they did, that would save $50,000. If your department did, that work for them.
Okay, let's let Director Coffer and then Director Gallo.
It's a lot of money, 50,000.
Understood. Director Coffer?
I don't even know where to start with that comment, but I will say one other item is that HR enters, like, we start the employee process in HR, and it's integrated with payroll and personnel. It's integrated. So they enter new employees, they gather the information, they enter a certain portion, they make sure certain things, there's like business rules in place. And then payroll then enters the tax withholding and things like that that the employees do. So it's, you can't just say, oh, we're not going to use that for HR, because it's an integrated system with payroll. The applicant tracking is a little, is extra, but the HR management and payroll are one, one module together. They're like, they're the same. There's more in HR that HR could use, but there's stuff that they, we have to have that module to do the other stuff. And like benefit projections and wages and salary projections. So, and, and may, may I continue? Your, to answer your other.
I'd like to talk about a different, Mr. Chair, may I, I'd like to talk about a different department than Director. How about building permit?
Councilwoman Heeman, let's do one question or one, one group of questions at a time. So Director Coffer, please finish, and then Director Gallo, and then we'll get to the next.
The other question is, is should we get a paper memo that someone has to type and enter the information into a memo to then come to an inbox in the finance department to then enter it again into a purchase requisition? And then we print copies for everybody, because everyone has to have copies, but we have to circulate it manually and get paper signatures on everything? I mean, you're taking us back to the 1980s in that mechanism. We are an integrated software, and we utilize it in that way. And this software doesn't just do purchase order requisitions, it manages the budget. People look at their line items, and it controls that as well. If there's purchase orders that get entered and there isn't money in the budget, it stops it and sends it through a process that it has to get addressed in a budget amendment. So there's controls in place in this, too. I, I think that it's, I don't know how to explain it any better, and I've worked in a lot of larger organizations and smaller ones. And this software is good for what we need it for. And whether finance enters all the purchase orders, or it's entered at each division, you're still paying for the purchase order module. It's not going to change the price. You're paying for software support and maintenance. So I mean, if you want to take it away, and then we go back to paper, let's bring back those typewriters, too, the ones with the erase button. Sorry.
Thank you, Director. Director Gallo, did you, would you like to say anything?
Not at the moment, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Heeman?
You know, I.
Please ask your question.
No, because you know what? Clearly, my intent is not to go back to the 80s. I think we are there when I can't get a report out of Munis, and that's all I want is a report. I have actually done the demos, Director. I have actually used Workday. And iWork, I don't know why we have that if Munis does such a fabulous job. So I'm confused as to why we have to use two systems for four of our departments. I just can't understand that, and it seems impossible to get an answer. So I'm happy, Mr. Glassburn, to move on from any, you know, $50,000 savings we might realize by having duplicative things. I did look at all the modules and, and all of the things in iWork and and Munis. And if any of my colleagues would like to have that information, I'd be happy to pass it along because it involves the Fleet Department, or our Fleet Management, Permit Management, Work Management, Building Permits, you know, so I don't know why we're doing two systems and paying for both. Just simply to have something connected to Munis, it seems, for convenience, not for antiquation of going backwards. I don't know that anyone would type a memo. There's a lot of emails today. But anyway, I will move on, Mr. Glassburn. Thank you.
Okay, seeing as I did not hear a proposed amendment, I'm not going to ask. So anyone else, or does, or Councilwoman Heeman, does anyone else have an amendment they would like to bring up before move on to transfers? Okay, seeing none.
Well, I will, Mr. Glassburn, reserve my right to make an amendment on this issue once I investigate it further. Thank you.
It is the right of anybody on the floor to propose an amendment. So I'm not, we're, we're just trying to have the best starting document for when those amendments come as possible. Okay, so for the transfer, Director Coffer and I discussed relative to what I have on the Excel sheet, a kind of a three, three-piece swap of things with half of the the worker salary and benefits for streets going to the general fund, the salt truck going to the streets fund, and then the general fund filling the $250,000 deficit, isn't the word Director Coffer would like me to use. I don't know what the correct word is, but we'll say deficit just for the moment. And that should yield us, based on what I've heard of these various amendments, somewhere in the vicinity of a general fund balance of 175, I believe, net. Again, my reason, inspiration for doing this is to try to keep our budget as normal as possible. I don't want folks to, including us on council, to misinterpret $900,000 in the general fund as being available. We have $3 million plus in items in the special revenue accounts I've listed that are drawing down balances. So in the global scheme of things, long-term, I would rather put us back towards normal if we get relief funds, if we have more funds. And so seeing as we have this additional money we didn't expect from the trans, from the temporary budget, that is the theory of these transfers. It doesn't spend any money that we haven't decided to spend. It's just putting them in different buckets. Does anyone have a comment or objection or a different idea? Okay, I've successfully worn you all down. So are there any objections to doing that? Mr. Lumbergh?
Yeah, so I don't understand the, the why are we moving the solid waste management amount?
So that is an earlier version. The only three things that would be moved, if you will, is clarifying that the salt truck is from the streets fund and not from the general fund. Putting half of the salary and benefits from the streets fund back in the general fund where it used to, where those salaries and benefits used to live as recently as 2019, in full, almost. And then putting $250,000 in our separation pay so that we're not going down in that account because we have a lot of retirements this year. And that is money that, quite frankly, we owe. It's just a question of when. So we don't control when folks decide to retire. If we, for whatever reason, have to do furloughs, layoffs, and more people retire, it's, we need to recognize that obligation and not spend that money inadvertently.
I would, I would just be interested in the finance director's comments on that. I understand you talked with her about this.
Yes. Director Coffer, please go ahead.
I think that if you look at the Street Maintenance and Repair Fund, the purpose of that, it's restricted by state law for maintaining our city streets, and that can include equipment to maintain city streets, salt for city streets, asphalt, wages and benefits of street crews, and all that. And so we have changed that percentage based on need in the general fund and in the Street Maintenance Fund to varying amounts of, you know, say 50%, each one was 20, 80, 60, 40. It's, it's in total, it's the same number of people, but it's split between those two funds. And my theory of the general fund is that I think that we should have, and, and Mr. Glassburn explained his, and I understand it better. He thinks that everything should basically come out of the general fund and keep the special revenue funds for, for their purposes in the future. Don't spend it on what you, even though you can spend it, he'd rather save it for future things. And I'm saying that those special revenue funds are for those specific purposes. And every year, we get gas tax money, and it's up to, I think it was like a million, almost a million six last year, which that's another thing, is that last year was the first year that it actually went up to a larger amount. It went up, if you remember, the gas tax increased. So we don't really know what that sweet spot is yet as to the wages and benefits, the salt, and, and the other, like, supplies and stuff, and having equipment being able to be purchased out of there. We, in the past, we've bought like maybe one major piece of equipment and some other smaller, like, you know, like a pickup truck or a trailer, things like that. And so what he's, what he's proposing is to move 50% of the wages back into the general fund. And his reasoning, my, my understanding of his reasoning is that he doesn't want people to think that, that we have that money to spend, that we, we actually move the expenses out to then make the general fund have a balance. And so he's saying, no, pay it out of the general fund. So what we agreed to is let's try and determine out of the Street Maintenance Fund, what is the, what should we, what that percentage should be, and get a better handle on it this next year, and start with the 50/50 split between general fund and Street Maintenance and Repair Fund for wages and benefits of the road crew. And then we'll have a better idea what those additional resources long-term are going to provide us. And then we can say, well, we can buy two pieces of equipment every year, maybe. And instead of doing the salt out of three funds, which is the motor vehicle license and whatever, we can do it all out of there, or we can do in-house road projects out of there. So which is the motor vehicle license and whatever, we can do it all out of there, or we can do in-house road projects out of there. So I think it's kind of an evolving fund because the revenue stream changed. And we haven't had that normal year yet. So I understood it and we thought that if we split it fifty-fifty and see how that goes, and then we can adjust it in future years based on, and come up with that percentage that, that is reasonable. But all of it can get paid out of there and a lot of cities do do that out of the Street Maintenance Fund in its retire, in its entirety, and others pay it all out of the general fund, or maybe they have a levy fund. So it's different in every community. I like to keep the general fund for more because that money can be used anywhere. And the Street Maintenance and Repair money can only be used for Street Maintenance and Repair. So like if I want flexibility, having that extra in the general fund to me helps if there's other needs that come up. But I think Mr. Glassburn and I just disagree on where that, where those, that extra money is parked at. Would that be a fair assessment?
Yes, I, I have a longer-term concern that when you move personnel that isn't in a special revenue account, again, let's take the roads, you know, we're, we're not moving a small amount. We're moving over the last two years, seven hundred seventy thousand dollars of salary and benefits, that that, you know, it creates the flexibility in general fund, which is nice, but that's also money that while it does go to roads and salaries, it's not going to the materials, it's not going to, to the other items. And so indirectly, it's crowding out because those funds would otherwise go to repairs. It's the other things besides the salary, it's crowding out our, our road repair. And so when or if communities sustain problems over time, that fund runs out and you can't, you can't spend more than you're taking in there, that fund, that activity, in this case, roads, are the ones that inadvertently get punished the worst because they're the ones that have the hole, not the other entities. So Mr. Limper.
So, so how are we doing labor as it relates to other general, like, specific funds? Is it in? Do we have the labor? Like, what, what percentage of those specialty funds? Do we have the labor and wages in the fund versus the general fund? I'm just trying to understand the consistency here because we were moving those in there. Go ahead.
Recreation is deemed a special revenue fund.
Right.
And all the wages and benefits are in that fund to provide for recreation, leisure time. And we could have monies in the general fund to do that too, but we, we don't. There are some in the Community Diversion, I believe the Community Diversion Fund has wages and benefits in there. And then the Street Maintenance Fund has always had streets, roads, pays for the overtime in the winter, and a varying amount of street and road crews, wages and benefits. They've always had that in there. And then when the Solid Waste and Recycling Fund had more of a reserve, we were doing, we were paying for chipping, brush chipping and collection out of the Solid Waste and Recycling Fund because it's recycling. So, but as the funds become not available or you see that it's draining it, we stopped, we've stopped doing that. So I think that, you know, I think that the city's financial people, me and the, or someone else in the future would recognize this ahead of time. And I mean, I think we've been able to keep that financial flexibility in all these funds as well. So it's just a different way of looking at it. And if it's council's choice to control the purse strings and if that's the way they want to do it, then that's what we're going to do. And we, we can live with that if, if we need to. So I'm, and I, I'm not opposed to putting more money in the separation pay. Mr. Glassburn and I talked, and if you, if you wanted to do something, that's something that, that we know we're spending down. And we put some monies in there at the end of this year or end of two thousand twenty and more in two thousand twenty-one. But if we could put more, I know that this year and next year, we have a lot of retirements. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't, and I'm sure that the mayor would agree if that's council's prerogative to put monies from the general fund and increase that from, I think it's three hundred and fifty to two hundred, an additional two hundred and fifty to a total of six hundred. I, I don't think that that's a problem.
Yeah. I guess, I guess my only observation is I, I think the more we can make the specialty funds more sort of fixed in nature of the expected costs, the, the better to be able to align all of those fixed costs that we know are going to go towards those annual spends and that can be allocated and budgeted appropriately with those funds. That allows more flexibility and you know, understanding of the, I don't want to call it the extra pool, but the non-committed or variable costs that come up from, from the general fund. To me, that, that allows you to focus more on the general fund when we go through these budgeting processes. And, you know, those, those maintenance funds are, you know, we have a better understanding what those are going to be on a regular basis. So that, that's the only thing I, I think is a benefit of having like the labor costs in the specialty funds because there, it kind of gives you the total cost of that piece of the services we provide within the city. So you know, I, I don't think it's worth, as long as there's kind of an understanding of how we want to approach this, I, I don't have, I guess, an issue one way or the other, but I do like the idea of the capital cost being something that we can look at. You know, until we get to the point where we have the full capital plan well-maintained and always allocated within those funds, I, I like the idea of having the fixed, fixed costs within especially funds and those capital expenditures coming from the general fund where we can, you know, appropriately prioritize those across the landscape of the city. That makes sense?
I, I hear you. Okay. We've talked a lot on this topic. Is there anyone else on council who would like to weigh in? Mr. Schuman?
I won't claim to be an expert on accounting, but it just really sounds to me like we're moving five dollars from one pocket to another. And I, I get it. I, Director Coffer's been doing this for a lot of years, never had an issue. And I, I've seen her do this before too, where we've used money from one fund or another to, to pay for an item or, or pay salaries. And she was just talking about some of those times. I, I don't, I, I don't see that it really matters at the end of the day. But, so I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hold up the budget over this. But if Director Coffer doesn't see any big issue with it, I, I don't have a big issue with it.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms., Director Coffer.
I mean, I'm going to give you a caveat of where it could become a problem and we may have to revisit this piece of it is that if revenues in the general fund do not come in, if income taxes and property taxes and, you know, the mayor's court and all those things don't come in, as we say, and, and we don't get to use revenue replacement in the way that we imagine it to be. And the revenues are down. And we only have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the projected carryover, then, then I, I think that we may have to revisit it. But at the end of the day, we, the administration and council both want this budget passed. So if, if the majority of council wants to allocate fifty-fifty, that's fine. If you don't want to do that and the majority of council doesn't want to do that and keep it the way it is, that's fine. It's semantics, it's, it's just semantics. So I think that either way is, is fine. And a budget is a point in time and, you know, we will deal with it down the road if, if it's not working the way it was intended. We do that all the time as well.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. I think I heard Councilman Limper and Councilman Schuman opposed to moving forward with this. Is there anyone else? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mr. Chair, I, and, and again, I'm opposed, but this is in the, like, human opposition. I just, I just think the goal of those funds is to try and be, you know, as, as fixed as possible. And, and so we better understand the cost that those services rely on within the city, how much, how much, how much we spend of that. So, you know, like you said, I, I oppose it, but I'm not, I agree with Mr. Schuman. This isn't worth holding up the budget for. Thank you.
Okay. So I think we'll ask that those, we have a, on the list, I put, because I heard us discussing, and I certainly wasn't upset about the merit raises issue. I don't think there's enough support on council for that issue. If someone wants to correct me and tell me otherwise, I'm ready to listen. But otherwise, I'd like to keep moving forward. Okay. Not seeing any. Okay, that is the end of what I had. Are there any other items that folks would like to address? Councilman Schuman?
Could you, could you, you went by that awful quick. You said that there isn't any support for the merit raises?
Support to remove or adjust the merit raises. But I, I don't know that those are the exact amounts. I was trying to approximate based on the information to illustrate. We're not talking about large amounts of money. I think it's more of a principle of organization, but yes, we, those are staying in place, is, is my understanding of the will of, of council.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Heeman, I think I saw your hand up. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Glassburn. Director Coffer, I would really like an answer and I don't want, you know, to, to really be, be rated for my question. My question is with regard to the Munis and the I-Works in the four areas of human resource, building permits, work service orders, and fleet fuel, maintenance, inventory, et cetera, that you listed on the information that you sent me. Can you please explain to me? Are there duplicative tasks being performed within those user groups by I-Works and Munis? And we're paying for support in two areas. So that's my first question. If you could answer it for each of the four categories, please.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Coffer.
Could I ask the mayor? Because he's the service, acting, acting as service director. To my knowledge, Fleet does not use I-Works.
That, that is correct. Fleet uses Munis. Every division uses Munis for their financials. Again, that's the system we use and, and that saves a lot of time with everyone using Munis financial package. But there's other divisions that use I-Work, but there's divisions that use a lot of things. Mayor's Court uses Mayor's Court software. They still use Munis. The rec center uses RecTrack and they still use Munis. So I just, I, I don't want, I, I don't want to, I don't want to complicate what, what is really an easy issue. Everyone uses Munis for their financials, but there's other software out there that they run, I guess, their day-to-day business off of, you would say.
Mr. Chair, unfortunately, Mayor, the information that I got does not appear that it's, it's exactly that simple. So that's why I have these questions. I, I had to request three or four times to get different pieces and parts of information. So I just have a few more questions.
Here, can I finish answering the other question?
Yes, Director Coffer, please go ahead.
And to my knowledge, maybe Director Gallo can answer. Does the Human Resource Department use I-Works?
No, no. No, they don't.
But you said that as part of your question of the four divisions that you were requesting.
They don't. Director, I, I, I just really am looking for answers. I, I'm not in for a debate here. I
I understand. What are the other divisions you requested? Let's finish the question. The other two divisions that you requested are, you said Fleet, they don't use I-Works. HR doesn't use I-Works. What was the other one? Did you mean building?
That is correct, that they don't use I-Works. I think that they use other things HR does. But anyway, I'm just, so building and then the other was the Service Department. And they, and for work orders is on your list, using Munis, and their list says work orders for, for I-Work, so I'm a little confused.
Can I answer that?
Please do.
Fleet and Service have the Munis module for work orders. It did not work for Service. I think we've gone over this because of, and I-Works does. However, it's one work order module. So whether Fleet just uses it or everybody uses it, we still pay the same amount for that work order module. And it is charged to Service, but that's just where it's always been charged and Fleet uses that work order module. So we still require it. And then Service uses the I-Work. So so I'm sorry if that's confusing, but that, they, it's a module. It's called work orders and Fleet utilizes that.
Okay. Okay, so.
So Councilwoman Heeman, again, I, I want to remind that the point of this is to determine if we have a majority for amendments. So what is the amendment that you're driving towards?
Well, that I'm wondering if we need to switch some of these departments to just using one or the other and, and, and/or finding something else that works to not have to pay, you know, the, the high cost of what it looks like some of these modules are. I've requested the information for different times and gotten different pieces and parts. And so unfortunately, I'm not able to process an appropriate, simple amendment. And the answers I'm, I'm getting are, you know, they say they're simple, but they're not. So, so I guess there, there won't be. But I do have another question or two, if I may. With regard, Director, to the, the SAS, SaaS hosted and then the city hosted, with regard, Munis is the goal to make it all city hosted or all SAS hosted? Are you intending on continuing, you know, to have two areas of budget? Or host offices?
Thank you, Councilman. May, may I answer, Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes, please go ahead.
We have always been city hosted. And this year in the two thousand twenty-one budget, we put in the budget to be SAS, which is Tyler hosted. It's hosted by Tyler than us. So we've always been city hosted. But council asked for the detail of where it's in the budget. And I want council to be aware that it, we, we can stay city hosted if we want. And while there's a savings in software maintenance, the maintenance costs, we have to then physically buy a physical server this year. And we also have to put back in the conversion costs and for assistance through the IT department to do that, which that was actually in the twenty, I don't know, I can't even keep track because it's been a couple of years. We've been trying to do this upgrade. So, but I just want council to be aware that this spreadsheet, that what's in the budget is the Tyler hosted. And if you say, oh, well, we can cut If you say, oh, well, we can cut, you know, whatever it is, I don't have that spreadsheet in front of me. Forty thousand dollars out and save all this money. You can't because. You still have to buy a server for twenty-five thousand and con, some technical assistance. For twenty thousand. So there's not really a savings. Now, mind you. And every four years, there's four servers from Munis, so we would have to buy servers. So um. So there's other costs associated with that. Um, and in addition, the monthly, um, we get like uh, patches and upgrades, fixes. To the software and improvements, um, both technical and improvements. And IT puts those in every month and. If we go Tyler hosted. The IT department doesn't have to be involved in that and it's then goes to Tyler doing it. Um, and that was another goal of it as well as um, the additional security. A lot of. A lot of software is going to a hosted environment rather than um, having physical onsite servers.
Okay, s- Mr. Chair, may I ask a clarification question?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so your twenty twenty-one is only Tyler hosted. That is all that your budget wants to include. Is that right?
That was what was in the temporary budget and in the permanent budget, yes.
Okay.
And, and there's, you know, it will then continue at that point. We're not going to go back and forth unless we find that it's a big problem, but. But we haven't heard that it's problematic and most people stay with hosted.
Okay, so we're no longer paying in twenty twenty-one for anything city hosted. We are paying only for Tyler hosted in twenty twenty-one.
We haven't done it yet because it, the budget hasn't been approved and. Um, an amendment to the original contract will have to come before council. For us to then go hosted. So there's a process to it.
I see. So, so the reality is, just so I understand, part of the year we'll be paying in a budget. For city hosted items that are not in our budget, but then. At some point, we'll be paying for Tyler hosted items that are all proposed in our budget now. And at, and at a higher cost, not, you know.
Chair.
S- so why don't we have both in our budget? I'm, I just don't understand and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be problematic. I, I really don't understand. If there's a split and we need some and Tyler hosted and some in the other, I think to look at a true budget and either. Understand it or offer an amendment, I, I need to understand the answer to that.
Okay.
Well, I guess I can.
Please go ahead on this and then Councilman Lumber had his hand up and we'll.
That's fine.
Okay.
The budget is, includes proposals to do. We're proposing to go to Tyler hosted. If. Council, if we don't do it until July. Then yeah, there's going to be half the year that, and mind you, we pay once a year and it'll get adjusted, but. Um. So if effectively half the year will be at the city hosted amount and half will be at the Tyler hosted, but. You have to put the whole amount in the budget. For, because remember the temporary budget was done back in November and we wanted to move forward with this, but. Because there are so many questions, we didn't bring forward any legislation for a contract amendment to do that until. This is resolved. So. You want to keep the amount that is proposed in the budget. And there, if we don't do it, we didn't do it in January, there should be some sort of cost savings of budgeting not, the budget not being expended, but. I won't know that until you pass the legislation to um, amend it and we move forward with it. So. Amend the contract. So I mean, I won't know that answer until we do.
Okay, Councilman Lumber.
Yeah, I think Ms. Copper just answered my question. So, you know, the. Whether it's um, part of the year on premise versus um, hosted. You know, that cost is going to be kind of split. Based on when, when this is executed. And then there's also hardware costs. That we would have to incur by being on-prem versus the cloud. So. So there is a. You know, overall savings that go into the cloud, but from a budget perspective. That line item for the hosted is covering, you know, at whatever time we cut off the on-prem. Portion and then the, the cloud portion based on that switch over, that's, that's in the budget line item because it's gonna. You know, it's not like we're paying for a full year of on-prem costs if we switch over to the cloud, right? That's essentially what you're saying.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other? Council members that would like to weigh on this topic? Okay, seeing none, I will ask one more time. Is there any other topics, amendments? Uh, that folks would like to bring up for others to consider so that we can determine if there's a majority who would like it to move forward? Okay, seeing none, I think we have. Uh, we all have a, an idea here. I. Look at my script here to make sure I say the correct thing. Chuck, do I move to adjourn from committee of the whole? Or hold this in committee or? There's no legislation.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Chair, I think, I think with there being no further business, I think you can call the meeting to a conclusion. That's a, that's my recommendation.
So, so ordered, uh, the meeting concludes at nine twenty-six.
Thank you, sir.
Everyone.